All this meeting in Madison, March 1st went to order at 4:31. First over these, please, this will be the flagellates. Flagellates.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proving the minutes from September 17th.
Make a motion to accept the manifest, please.
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, approval on unsealed non-public minutes, August 20th.
Make a motion to accept this manifest, please.
I will second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, all the heads of 15th to 25th, we already signed, right?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. So, we will approve the manifest from September 30th to October 7th, first. Uh, payroll, twenty-nine thousand, six ninety-five and twenty cents. Payroll liabilities, nine thousand, five hundred forty-eight, fifty-two cents. Counts payable, seventy-one thousand, forty-nine and one cent. Madison Elementary School, three hundred twenty-five thousand, for a total of four hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-three cents.
Make a motion to accept the manifest.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's already signed.
Current manifests, October 15th to 25th. Payroll, thirty thousand, five hundred ninety dollars, forty-one cents. Payroll liabilities, nine thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars and forty-four cents. Counts payable, seventy-one thousand, five hundred sixty-seven dollars, twenty-nine cents. Three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to MES. And the Hampshire Retirement System is twenty thousand, five twenty-three and fourteen cents, for a total of four hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Motion to accept that manifest?
Um, I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Public comment. Sorry, your hand go up first, Mike.
Sorry.
Shoe for it.
Mike Vayou, um, I just was, had a question, and maybe someone knows the answer. At the junction where Snake Road, which Classics Road, uh, takes a right-hand turn, goes across East Shore Drive, and then enters by Lambert Driveway? Seems like there was like a dump truck load of sand put in there and leveled. The town, it looks like, has created a water pond retention area for a spring runoff. Does anybody know who put that sand there? Or what the purpose was of it?
Sure, no. I'll have to touch base with Josh and see if he knows anything about it.
Do you know about what time, when that happened?
I, I know it's been there.
I, I noticed, may I, Donna Vayou, I noticed it about a week and a half ago.
But it could have been there longer.
And it's, it's not gravel, it's sand. And, um, wondering if the town did it? I think it's conservation land. It's intriguing.
I'm looking on the DPW list for at least the past, probably two to three weeks, maybe four weeks. I don't see it on the DPW list. Yeah.
I mean, if an entity didn't, like the Snowmobile Club, because that's a cutoff. I think they have permission to use it, but I believe if they did something like that, they would have to get permission from the sport. So, maybe they didn't do it. I don't know who did it.
Yeah, isn't that Lambert's property?
No.
No, it's not.
No, that's part of the conservation.
Yeah.
Um, I forget the name of the people, but they put thirty-five acres in conservation. And, um, it's, it's in between the Lambert West Shore and then East Shore. It's a little seventy-five foot cutoff.
Okay. It's a Snake Road jump piece?
It's a, it, it's just sand.
Yeah.
So, it was a, it, it was dumped off, and I, and that's why I noticed it, because it was a, a drop-off. And then when I noticed it next time, it had been spread out. So.
We'll look into it.
Kathy Cozel, said Lakeview Drive. Just wanted to talk a little bit about Nicholas Gage and Ken Barton, which is his property. Um, a couple of weeks ago, there was eighty-eight hundred dollars worth of legal fees that got reimbursed from the Expendable Trust Fund. And so, we just kind of looked at those invoices, and, um, there was about forty-six hundred dollars in legal fees that were spent on this particular case. So, kind of looking at this thing, um, back on March 26th, the town filed a lawsuit against Mr. Gage for running a short-term rental on his property. And the town's attorney, Matt Johnson, said, I'm sorry, Cordell Johnson, said that the courts should impose civil penalties of two hundred seventy-five dollars a day, starting from January 12th, um, which is when he had his second denial from his EBA. Those fines amounted to just over twenty thousand dollars. Uh, Cordell Johnson is also asking that the court bar Mr. Gage from renting his property, short-term, this is the article in the Conway Daily Sun, short-term, and that Gage reimburse the town for all out-of-cost, um, out-of-pocket expenses, uh, including investigating and prosecuting this case. So, basically, Mr. Gage, um, potentially owned the town about twenty-five thousand dollars. And it was just disappointing to learn that the forty-six hundred dollars in legal fees that were taken from the Expendable Trust Fund, um, that were used in a Nicholas Gage case, never got reimbursed. The town was holding all the cards at that point, Mr. Gage was representing himself. Uh, the negotiation that was accepted and agreed upon by this board was to waive all the fines and not to collect even a nickel of the legal fees that were incurred by the town. This was forty-five hundred ninety dollars of taxpayer money, and it just seemed to set a very bad precedent when the property owner can continue to arrogantly violate the zoning ordinance right up to the last minute, and he says, okay, I'll stop, and then all is forgiven. And the threat of the daily fines has no teeth whatsoever. The Select Board had been looking for a case to prosecute in order to determine the strength of the amended ordinance from March of 2022 that made renting a dwelling unit for less than thirty days a prohibited use and subject to daily fines and violations. This was the perfect case, as this property was not even completed until after that date. I just hope that in the future, that the Select Board has a stronger position regarding reimbursement of at least the out-of-pocket legal fees that the town has every right to collect. And again, that is taxpayer money.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Hi, um, I understand, Donna Vayou, I understand this is only public comment, um, and I, the dialogue is, um, probably kept at a minimum, so I might need to get on the agenda, but, um, I would like to know when the first town, the first date, the town was notified from DES about the PFAS situation in the town of Madison. Was it February 21st, uh, of '21 or before?
I would have to do some digging to get that date for you.
You think it's the 21st?
I do not know off the top of my head.
Okay, and were the adjacent properties notified when the town got that information?
I am not sure.
You're not sure? I think.
It depends on when we were notified. I, it's, it's an agenda item, it's something that needs to, it's an agenda item.
Okay, 'cause I have some specific questions about who was notified, and when they were notified, and how they were notified. I mean, the post office, the library, McLean, the school, I mean.
Well, it's.
These numbers are very, very high and should be very, very concerning, so I guess I'll ask to be put on the agenda?
That would be your best bet.
Linda, is that possible?
Would you want her to, like, like the go-through-the-departmenthead kind of idea, see if I can answer her questions and if I can then?
Yeah, the first thing to do would be to see Linda about, maybe they can answer your questions upstairs as opposed to down here. And if you don't feel like you had your questions answered, then put, be put on the agenda.
Why can't that be answered?
I would like to be put on the agenda. I think it's, it's in the public interest, um, for public knowledge, so.
Mike, do you have any of that information?
Pardon me?
I'm just asking, um, Mr. Brooks if he has any of the information.
Not off the top of my head, uh, just what I can remember, I'm not going to remember the date, but the first notification that we got was from a water test from a property across the street that had contamination. That's, I can't remember the timing of it, but we did our first test at that point to find that we also had contamination, but they were two different arrays of substances, so the cause for the property across the street was not us, but we had contamination from something else. And then, so that testing got sent into the state. They corresponded back, uh, at least a year later to draw another test, which we did, and sent in. And it was after that that the whole process started with the focus site investigation, which we commenced last year. And that we're, we're in for the rest of the, probably my life.
So, what, is it a fair assumption that, um, one would believe that once the town got a letter of such concern, it would notify the adjacent properties?
Maybe.
Maybe.
But that being said, we're at fifteen minutes for public comment, and we have a pretty lengthy agenda.
Okay, can I just have one more question? Whose desk does this fall upon? The selectmen's, the emergency management director?
Both.
Both? Um, where's the, where's the buck stop? At your desk?
Financially, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
If not financially, what would be the other component?
What was that?
Adam said financially, it falls on the Select Board.
I mean, we make all the decisions regarding it, yes. Essentially, it's all financial, it's all taxpayer dollars, no matter what you're doing.
I mean, that's more than just a financial issue, but yeah, we could talk about it on the next agenda.
Uh, I don't have a problem with it being on the agenda, just listed out the format requested. Alright, first item on the agenda is requests for money from the trustees for the PEG TV ETF. Yes, we discussed this one.
So, just to let folks know, this is for the, um, Telview service, um, that PEG TV uses, when you can go through the Town of Madison website to find videos of meetings, they're not the ones on YouTube, this is the Telview service. So, this is a support contract. I want to say it's five years or something, it's a.
It is, that's in the motion, and I'm allowed to read, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So, just before you have a motion, and it's just informational for me, is there a way of knowing how many people watch that? Like, is there some kind of?
The YouTube, yes, the Telview, I'm not sure. To totally put you on the spot, do you know off the top of your head if there's a way to see how many people view the Telview?
I don't think there's some exact way to say how many people are watching and when. Um, we probably can, get the numbers of how many people subscribe to that channel, three. Uh, but at the same time, we're able to put the videos up on the, on Town Madison website, and they're available for view as well, as opposed to the YouTube. Uh, but yeah, I don't think there's really an, a hundred percent way to say how many people are watching it.
Okay, so, exactly.
Any other questions? Alright, I will make a motion to request the withdrawal by the trustees of the trust fund for the PEG TV Expendable Trust Fund in the amount of five thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars and fifty cents. This will reimburse the general fund for payments, Telview, to Telview for the purpose of a five-year support coverage plan.
Make a motion to, uh.
I was going to make a motion, but I didn't know how to phrase it.
I just made the motion, all you're going to do is second it.
Alright, that I seconded it.
I'm going to write off the paper.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Put these aside for the end of the meeting first.
Yeah.
It's just you and I.
Yep. Alright, the second one from the trustees is for ground, from the groundwater remediation ETF. And that is for payments to Wilcox and Barton for previously discussed contamination and groundwater. Any questions, comments, concerns?
No.
Alright, well then I will make a motion to request a withdrawal by the trustee of the trust funds for on the groundwater remediation Expendable Trust Fund in the amount of twenty-six thousand, six hundred fifty dollars and thirty-eight cents. This will reimburse the general fund for payments to Wilcox and Barton for invoices, one four six one three, one five one one one, one five two four one, and one five four four five for the purpose of investigation or remediation of groundwater conditions.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the third one, what I believe is the last one, is from the Ball Field ETF for all the maintenance that's been done so far to the outfield and the material for the infield that's sitting up there.
I have, um, I have a question, there's an invoice from, um, Casella Organics. The total invoice is five thousand, seven hundred seventy-five. The amount, um, set to be removed from the Ball Field ETF is three thousand, eight hundred fifty? There's about a two thousand dollar difference?
Yep. That's because if you flip the page over, you'll see that that last invoice was, do you have that for me?
Nope. I don't think. Well, anyways, um, so when they were delivering, um, Josh and I bought a load to put on our fields, and it came down through the same invoice, and there's a copy of the check that showed that we paid for it, so that was the difference between the amount that we paid. Thank you. I thought I made a copy of that, too.
Any other questions? Alright, well then I make a motion to request a withdrawal by the trustee of the trust funds for the Ball Field Expendable Trust Fund in the amount of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. This will reimburse the general fund for payments to Casella Organics, Village Green Lawn Care, Burke Quarry, and Ospey Aggregates for the purpose of rehabilitating Burke Field.
Oh. I just have a question, quick question. Um, there were some trucking fees? We weren't able to truck, they had to truck it?
They did.
Okay, it's about two thousand dollars.
The amount of material we needed, we didn't have the capability to truck at all.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety Grant Agreement.
Is it in the, um, oh, you know what, it's probably in your signature, I'm sorry. Because we needed to make sure that you guys verbally said that you accepted it, so I moved it up to an agenda item so that it would just get pushed through in the signature items. Just so folks know, this is a sixty-five hundred dollar grant?
Sixty-six hundred, there's a grant limitation.
Um, for our police department to do, um, stops if necessary for distracted driving, speeding DUIs.
DUI, um, that could join the quick seatbelt, uh, mobilizations.
And so, this is to reimburse officers' hours doing?
This is either overtime highway safety grants, so it's, it pays the officer for the overtime that they make for that extra detail. And it's in addition to their normal, um, work schedules.
Do we usually use all sixty-six hundred of it?
No. I hope to. That's the plan.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
And we don't lose it in the future, if we don't use, if we don't use it, we don't lose it. We'll continue to get it if we apply for it.
Doesn't accrue though, does it?
It does not, no.
That would be nice. Do you want to make some kind of a motion to?
Yep, I will make a motion to accept the Office of Highway Safety Grant Agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll sign that at the end.
There's a lot of little stickies on that where you have to initial, just stand, so I don't know what those are all about.
Alright, next up, request for appointment, Amy Power to the RECP Committee, which is in desperate need of members and alternates, for everybody out there. I don't have any questions, I don't know her personally, I don't know if anybody here has met with her.
I, I don't.
Nope, I think, um, I heard that she attended a meeting, um, she was involved, looking forward to working with the group, so. Need a motion?
I will take the motion.
Alright, I will make a, a motion to appoint Amy Power to the Town of Madison Recreation Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do up a note for the next meeting for you to sign for her to. Thank you.
Alright. Conway Branch Planning Group, meeting on October 9th. What did we get, were you able to go to that?
I do not, I had, uh, an issue.
And as luck would have it, they rescheduled it. Good try, good try. Um, actually, they did, they rescheduled to Thursday, October 24th at nine-thirty, same place.
What do you think, John?
What is that?
Twenty close, no good for me, I don't think he sees it.
Oh, this is, so this is, um, the Conway Branch Planning, this is to plan, I think, use of the rail trail?
Yeah.
From Ospey up to where Cross is 113?
Okay.
To the Silver Lake Post Office.
Okay.
I don't have availability to attend, Joy, do you?
What time was it?
Nine-thirty.
Where?
Uh, over in Center Ospey. Um, I think at the, um.
Brede House?
Brede House, yeah. Maybe?
Sounds like John's busy, I know I'm busy.
Yeah, and doctor's appointment, you get to a certain age, you count the liz by your doctor appointment.
And it's, um, yeah, they have to, we're a part of the RSA, so we have to have a rep.
Okay, does it have to be a selectman?
Yes.
I didn't mean you, I know there was a member of the community who was particularly interested in that, the use of that rail trail.
I believe that it was written, oh, I think it was written as, um, a selectman or the representative.
They do, the representative.
Um, uh, let's see, it is to be made up of a selectman or their appointed agents of the town of Ospey and Madison, and a representative of the New Hampshire North Coast Railroad.
They must be aware that some of the tracks have been removed, I would assume.
I would think so.
Oh, I think they would. I mean, they just removed the ones on 41.
Yep.
And I think the ones in Silver Lake.
Can we, um, request support from the community and see if someone of, is particularly interested in this project and willing to attend this meeting and take notes for us, or? As if they have, do they have to be a decision-maker? Not that an individual select person can make a decision, but.
Yeah, one's lucky, we can't make the decision yet.
Oh, I mean, if we can attend, I, if Linda's available to go, I'd just assume, send Linda. If you think you can make it work.
Oh, yeah, I could, I was kind of being funny. Sure. Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have to, like, make some kind of thing to say to appoint me, or just say you're something? Or am I really appointed, or am I, or am I more just like the, we'll go and see what happens?
Designated agent.
I'm, I don't have a problem, I'll make a motion to appoint Linda as our representative for the Conway Branch Planning Group meeting on October 24th.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And if, um, if my morning clears up, Linda, then I'd go save you the trip, or we can go to the.
I'll take the number, so you know. Reappointment of Chief Brooks as Fire Chief for the Town of Madison. We have signatures from members of the Fire Department recommending Chief Brooks be reappointed. Looks like a healthy portion were in attendance.
Looks like six in attendance out of eleven. And all six in attendance, it looks like signed the, uh, signed the recommendation to reappoint. Chief Brooks, what is the status of the Fire Department nonprofit?
That's a great question. Back when that issue was raised this spring, I sent a letter to the accountant that's handling everything, and we're still waiting for that response.
Because on the IRS website, it hasn't, it was discontinued in 2020.
Right, and I, I don't know the ins and the outs, some, the wrong form was filed, and we got shifted into a category that we shouldn't be in, and supposedly the steps were taken to correct that. Then that was interrupted by the COVID disaster, but we're long out of the COVID disaster, and we still don't have an answer.
Where does the money go, like, where is it held?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it's, I, I believe the account's in Northway Bank, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, because I'm not involved with it.
And it's, who, who?
Mike Morrow is the treasurer, for lack of a better word, he maintains the account balancing and all that stuff. And there's an independent board for the nonprofit, which I can't be involved with as the Fire Chief.
Is it, like, it, so, somebody asked me where the, um, like, the fire tree, the fire trees, the Christmas trees that were sold. Did that go to, like, town as revenue, did that go to the Fire Department?
It went into the 501(c)(3) as, as like a fundraiser.
And what is the money used for?
That would be a question for the Board of Directors.
Who's on the Board of Directors?
Well, they're all members of the Fire Department, and I, I'm not sure I know exactly who's what now. But I can, I can ask Mike and get it. Because like I said, I can't be involved with it statutorily.
So, is, do they purchase equipment? I mean, I would assume you would know if they purchased something for the firehouse.
Right, no, no. There's not a lot of money spent, like, they would have purchased the Christmas trees that were sold, stuff like that, but no. It's, I mean, really, it's been fundraising-driven, and not much gets spent out of it, that I'm aware of. Like, the, uh, the 911 signs, all of that stuff runs through that account, like, the materials and everything, and then people make donations when they, they buy a sign, they're twenty-five dollars to cover the materials, and that all goes through that.
So, like, the old homeweed chicken dinner, like, there's a lot of cash, does that get, like, handed over to that board, or?
Yep, it goes through the Old Homeweed Committee first, because all the, every eventual Old Homeweed goes through the Old Homeweed Committee, and then, once the, because the Old Homeweed Committee orders all the food and stuff, the, um, I don't know what the word, I'm. I don't know what the word I'm looking for is, but, well, the net, any profit would go to the Fire Department and go into that account.
Any other questions concerning appointing for Chief to the Madison Fire Department again?
Sorry?
I'm just looking for questions that actually pertain to appointing a chief, so that we can stay on the agenda.
Okay, so the forty-four thousand dollars a year that gets set aside for the firefighters, it's point system, like, how does that work?
Well, each, a point roughly equates to an hour, and everything is determined based upon the, for every call for service that we get, there's a printout that comes from the dispatch center, Carroll County Dispatch. Depending on the expansive time, everything gets entered into the software, and like I say, pretty much an hour of time is a point, and that just accumulates, and I can go in and put in the date range and print it out, and then just equate the, based on the total aggregate number of points for each individual, and then just do the math, divide that into the forty-four thousand dollars. You come to a value per point, and then take each individual, the points that they accumulated, and do the math of their number of points by the value of a point to determine what their portion of the stipend will be.
So it's taken from the dispatch and put directly into the, entered into the firehouse software?
Yep.
Everybody who reports to a fire?
Yep.
Is logged with the dispatch?
Yep. We have our internal run sheet, which we obviously track, the members that, that went, and what, you know, the whole nine yards of the vehicles that went, depending on what the call was, the people that were on the vehicle, you know, whoever attended that call. And then, all the times come off the dispatch report, and they get stapled together, and that's, yeah, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, no, sir.
Do I have a motion?
Think a motion to reappoint Chief Brooks as Fire Chief.
I'll second that motion. Call the paper?
Aye.
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 All right, FEMA Project seven four eight one two three. Pass that one to, was that this one?
Do you have an email?
Yeah. So this is FEMA basically telling us that they're not interested in paying for Modoc Hill Road, and we have two options. We can withdraw our request, or we can leave it in process, and should they deny it, we have the right to appeal. And their denial is based off the process of events of us not fixing it fast enough, that's my understanding.
Yes, that's.
The gist of it, multiple storms, and we weren't able to fix it fast enough so that the second storms that were not declared didn't damage it, essentially.
Yep, two of the storms were declared disasters, two were not. So they wouldn't look at the two that, damage from the two storms that were not declared disasters?
According to FEMA, we didn't repair it well enough before those storms hit, so they don't want to pay for it, so. Essentially.
Basically, it's just, I think I've told you before, we're on our third, PDMG is the project delivery, he's the primary person that I deal with, FEMA, with all of this documentation, everything. Well, based on whatever their internal timing and whatever, we're on the third person for this same event. Well, the July sixteenth event that we've been working on the longest. So he's reviewing everything, and according to, well, you read his email, he had concerns from the moment he set eyes on it. But nobody, of all the people that had all of this information from FEMA, the state of New Hampshire, nobody ever said anything about the possibility that that wouldn't be a covered project. And you hit the nail on the head, the two choices that were given is to withdraw the project, which would, it's the only project we have in that disaster, so it would just be, that would end everything. The only way we can get any form of appeal, because frankly, it's easy from the outside looking in to say, you didn't fix that, but it's not as simple as we think it is. Number, first and foremost, we had to have a contractor do it.
Right.
Because of the size of the culverts, they exceed the capabilities of our DPW. And, and I don't understand why they cut off at thirty-six inch culverts for our DPW, but that's the way that it is, I'm not sure why. But the fact is, we needed an outside contractor to make the repair to those culverts. And the issue of timing, it was a December event, now, back up. It was damaged in May of twenty-three, that was not declared. We did start a process of trying to identify the scope of the work and everything, to engage a contractor, and for all of the reasons we weren't able to between May and December. So basically, that's the crux of what he's saying, because we didn't fix those culverts, and by fix means replace, because they had to be replaced. Because we didn't do that between May and December is why he's saying. It's basically negligence on behalf of the town. The only way we can plead our case is to go forward with the project, and who knows, maybe he's wrong, maybe they won't deny it. But what he's saying is, they probably will, they'll send out requests for information, ask us to prove that the damages from, the damages to the facility were all from that December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three storm event, and of course, we can't say that, because we know there were damage in May.
Right.
But at the very least, it would give us an opportunity to appeal, plead our case because of our purchasing policies. The financial proposals that we did get were large, and the timing being after town meeting, the money wasn't available. There was a lot of stuff that the Board of Selectmen was wrestling with, then an engineer was engaged, the numbers got bigger. And it was just, the only way we're going to be able to plead our case is to, to go forward with the project and let, let the official process happen, let them deny us, if that's what they're going to do. But at least then we would be able to appeal, and we would be able to appeal twice automatically. I don't know, obviously, this is the first disaster that I've worked through with FEMA to begin with, and I certainly haven't ever appealed one, so I don't know what it would be, what it would, what it would be like, what it would entail.
Is this Modoc? Modoc, Modoc Hill?
Yep. I certainly am not interested in withdrawing just to make their job easier, because that's kind of what it sounds like to me.
It sounds like we have to withdraw because we don't meet the criteria, but we can refile?
No, no.
With the supporting evidence, no?
No, no, there's no, the two choices are, we withdraw the project and forego any appeal rights that we have, or proceed, develop the project, present it up, the FEMA chain of command, or their process to take place, which, there's several different levels of their review, different people that look at it and review and approve or, or not. So those are our two options. We, and basically what he's saying is, if you, if you go forward, we're going to deny it. So we either have to withdraw and, and walk away, pay for the project a hundred percent, or go through it, potentially lose, potentially lose all of the appeals, and we still, we pay for it anyway.
We might as well see if we can get it work.
The only chance that we have at reimbursement is to proceed with the project. If they're going to deny it, let them deny it, then appeal the denial, plead our case with all the facts and circumstances.
When he says this will require a rework to keep it in process, do you know what he means by that?
Which one are you on?
On number two, on the top of page three, request to process the project anyway, this will require a rework as the work is now completed.
Oh, meaning, when they first, when they first come out and characterize, so when they, when they came out to do the site visits and all the stuff that they've done, at all of those times that they've been here, it was a gaping hole in the ground, nothing had been done. Now, we've engaged a contractor, the new culvert is in place, and all the work has been completed. So the way that they, the way they prepare a project that's not complete is different from the way they prepare a project for work that's already been completed. And again, I don't really understand the difference.
So, does he mean rework of paperwork, rework of the project?
No, rework of paperwork and the way that it's presented to their, through their process. It's, it's different when the work is to be done, to be completed, and when the work is already completed. And additionally, I think part of what he means is, we initially, we claimed the, when we got those steel plates and put them on before the winter season, after the May event, but before the December event, that was considered, I can't remember the phrase that they used, but like, emergency repair or something, emergency measures.
Yep.
And, and reading through what he's had to say is, we can't, we can't make, so basically, if we, when he reworks it, that, they have different categories, one is a, category C is the, the crux of all the work, but I think there's a category B, which is that emergency remedial measures. We would lose that because we can't claim, well, at least for the reasons that he stated, you can't claim emergency measures for damage that you knew about before the storm. Is basically what he said. It all comes back to May coming before December.
He talks about he has the list of reasons, contractor issues, engineers advisements, select board decisions, that process and effort to repair the culvert system was abandoned. Is that, if we provide supporting documentation, does that work in our favor, or do those, does that work against us? Because it sounds like there are kind of some potentially valid reasons why work was deferred.
Well, and, and I think the choice of words sometimes is troubling. These are obviously all his words, and I don't like that he stuck in abandoned, because the town didn't abandon anything, except for, the first go around, I think we got a price in the neighborhood of three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, which we didn't have in the budget. So, some discussion was had at the Select Board about how do we, how do we approach this?
Right.
So they took a step back, reworked the proposal, different criteria, and I, I don't even remember all of the day by day, but.
But that's the same project that we pulled out four hundred and fifty-five from reserves? Four hundred and fifty-five thousand was that?
No, no.
This project was in the neighborhood of ninety thousand.
So is that the ninety thousand dollar invoice that we have then, that hasn't been?
Yes.
Approved yet?
Yeah, that's this, this Modoc Hill project, yes.
So at this point, they're denying, or?
They're saying that they would deny.
Yeah.
And they're asking us to withdraw.
And I would, I do not want to withdraw for many reasons, but one of them being that the project doubled in price compared to what we had on the warrant article. And we didn't abandon anything.
My two cents worth is, that's my first and foremost, I don't like the language. We were struggling to get through a situation that none of us had worked through before. Now granted, we're in the midst of working through the July storm, but hell, I'm still working on that today, hopefully. I'll give you an update later. I've never worked through a project to completion, so like, every day is a new learning experience. I would just, my two cents, I, I'm in agreement with you, I don't like the language in the letter, because it's, really, it paints a picture that something wasn't done that could have been done, and that's just not true. If, first and foremost, if we had legally, whatever the requirements are that prohibit our DPW from, if we had the ability to replace the pipes ourselves, they would have.
Right.
If we had the money to buy them.
I ask a question, has that been communicated to?
Oh, yes.
It has, you've been able to have a conversation with this person?
Yes, but, like, I'm talking, I'm down here, the guy I'm talking to is up here, the people he's dealing with are up here somewhere. We're both low men on the totem pole in, in the equation, so he's not a decision maker, he's not going to deny anything.
He's just saying he knows what they're going to do.
Well, but he's the guy that they selected to convey the bad news to me, because.
Because they didn't want to get yelled at.
Because they didn't want to, and, and I don't even know who they are.
Right. I mean, I don't see any, I don't see any reason to do anything with it, I just assume you keep going forward, I don't, unless somebody here wants to make a motion to withdraw, but.
The only chance we have at reimbursement is to proceed. If they do deny the project, then we could appeal. If we withdraw, we lose everything, and we just accept that we're going to pay it a hundred percent with no reimbursement whatsoever. And I just say the.
I just want to know what happened to all those people that were up there when we walked over that site. There were fifteen people there, all wearing their fancy jackets with FEMA and all this heavy crap. It was clear, I didn't know how to fix it, but I could see the big hole. It doesn't take a whole lot of talent to figure out that that's washed out. What happens after that, to me, was, is irrelevant. I'm not yelling at you, Mike.
No, I know you're not, but he, he can't answer that question. Basically, what he told me, and, you know, we can't go back in time, had, had I been there, he said, I would have told you right at the site, after the December event, knowing what, all of the information that was presented, because I haven't hidden anything from anybody. I put together a PowerPoint so I think you were here, Adam, and showed him all the damage all the way through for every storm event. He said, if I had seen that, I would have told you right there that day that this was questionable because of timing. But nobody said anything, not FEMA, not the state of New Hampshire. And they were all there, there were well over a dozen people between the meetings we've had in this room and the onsite visits to assess the, the damage, take measurements, all the, all the stuff that they do. There were so many people there that supposedly should have known what this guy knows, and should have said this at that time, but nobody did.
Sounds appealable to me.
And that's where I'm going, and, and again, I want.
That's our own choice, I mean, to walk away would be crazy.
When did they walk through?
Oh, this was in May of twenty-four.
And not to mention all the time Mike's already invested in.
Right, yeah, we're already this deep in it, we're not leaving now.
It could, I get a motion to that effect, and then I'll just get an excerpt from the minutes from Linda to send to FEMA.
I will make a motion that we continue on with FEMA Project seven four eight one two three, and continue to request reimbursement for that storm event, it was the May first event.
No, it's the December eighteen.
December eighteen event.
And then April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, event as well, it was damaged then as well, which is declared emergency, no?
Right, and there's a, sorry. That is another project we can, we can talk about further, but somebody from FEMA at one of the meetings, again, we had. again, we had the meetings regarding the December event in May of this year. The April event haven't, and they told me not to apply, not to present for that because we were already covered by December. And he said that that was wrong for them to tell me that, so. There's a whole bunch of folks within FEMA that don't have the same information that they're working from, and I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Do you need to reword that motion? Are we got it?
Well, I'd go with the December eighteen date.
Yep, that's perfect.
I'll second.
Seconded by Joy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We have an intent to cut from Fattin on Maple Grove, Grove Road.
Well, I thought it was important to bring it up because it's a unique piece of property. There's a class six road that goes through it. It's on Ascenic Road, Maple Grove Road, the Amicanet Road, six class six goes through it. We have to sign it tonight because the four reasons why you don't have to sign it don't apply. We have to sign it within fifteen days, and tomorrow's the fifteenth day.
So, it says, sorry.
Okay.
Name of access road, it says Maple Grove Road, so does, that potentially is where they intend to cut through as opposed to down the Amicanet Class Six Road?
I'm a, yeah, that makes sense that they did put that down, but when I did talk to Vicki, she wasn't a hundred percent sure where they were coming, or she would have to have asked Tom where they were actually coming in from. But I did mention that they would need a driveway permit, um, cut to, you know, to get in there, and she was aware that that would be something that they'd have to do.
And then that they can't cut, as you told me, they can't cut along Maple Grove because it's Ascenic.
Right, there's certain restrictions, like, more restrictive than regular timbering things when it comes to a, um, Ascenic Road, there's that RSA two thirty-one that explains how that all works. They want to cut in, within that section, they have to appeal to the planning board. And usually the only ones that come to the planning board for anything would be a utility company or something who's gonna trim trees.
Yeah.
But, there's two hundred and sixteen acres, so I would think that they could leave that section apart alone near the, the road now. But, um, when I did talk to Vicki and did ask for those few things, I said that, knowing that you guys would need to sign this tonight, I said, anything that came out of tonight's meeting, tomorrow, her and I'll chat on the phone. I said, I'd send her copies of all the paperwork that I have regarding everything, and we can talk together on the phone about everything. I just wanted to make sure I'm gonna express the right things to her as to what you guys want.
So, the concern is the potential for a bond to protect that classic for?
Or Maple Grove?
Or Maple Grove.
Yeah, you could, either one. Typically in the past, the board has hesitated to make people have a bond for a class five road. Would be, um, the thought of that if they have to have one, everybody has to have one. Whether you're bringing a, um, a cement truck into a new, you know, a new build, potentially you could ruin the road. Granted, you're not gonna be driving over it, you know, a hundred times. But if they do damage the road, they are responsible. We can prove that they did it. So, either way, whether they have a bond or not for the class five part of it,
Right.
we can require them to, to fix it. The class six part of it, that's where you would need the bond because we can't repair it if anything happens to it or spend the money to repair, you know.
So, I think the first thing we need to do is find out where they're gonna access Maple Grove. Take some pictures of it. See how it stands today. And then when the project is done, you go back and look again, and if there's any damage, they'll be billed for it.
So, if they do come off Maple Grove as described in their intent to cut, they either have to go up the super steep part off of East Madison Road or come up the dirt of Pound behind?
I can't imagine coming out on East Madison Road with a logging truck.
No.
I mean it's.
So, there's gonna be a lot of, they're gonna be over the dirt roads?
There's gonna be a lot of.
And you guys just repaired that whole road, by the way.
Yeah.
We really can't tell him where he can go on his last five road.
But you can hold him accountable for damage, but you have to prove that he did it.
It was him that did it.
So, we need, well, first of all, we need to decide if we want a bond for the class six road. Which I'm sure, regardless of whether or not he says he's going to use it, it still falls on that property. Which is within the scope of his intent to cut.
But we're talking class, class six from East Madison Road up to their property? Or we're also talking about the portion on their property that goes out to Maple Grove?
No, we can only, just the portion on their property. They're not gonna be on the other section of it unless,
Unless they do.
Unless they use it, yeah.
I know that the last, there was another logging job a couple of years ago that didn't even go in that far, and they had a heck of a time with that, there's a water crossing there. And then they had a heck of a time getting out, they could only go one way, so they were going down the end, turning around King Pine, and then heading back up again all the time because they couldn't make the swing both ways. But like I said, she didn't know where they were actually gonna come in from.
It's a, it's a quite a distance from East Madison up to their property.
Over that class six?
Yeah. Which is probably well grown over at this point now, or is it still?
I don't know. I drove out there a few years ago when they did do the, the cut, and it was pretty manageable. But they did undo that whole water crossing thing there, and that would require DPS approval. I'm pretty sure they would need DPS approval to be able to do anything with that.
So, the shortest distance is Maple Grove?
For sure.
By far.
Because they have frontage on that.
Right. So, then it just be, and then we can't do anything for, can't do any kind of bond for Maple Grove or Pound because?
Not that we can't, it just doesn't make any sense because we can make them fix it anyway.
Right, right. So, it's just the, like you said, the class six.
And essentially, yeah. So, do we want a bond and how much of the bond do we want?
Linda, you said traditionally it's been a thousand, but has this, has it been this long of a road?
Can anybody remember the last time we did it for this?
The last, did you?
I wanna say it was, um, on, off of Bickford Road, when they did a build at the end of Bickford Road, Sharon Jones' property, I think was the last time that we actually did a bond, and it was with Fattin.
Yeah, I'm sure he's accustomed to it.
And there's documentation about, um, kind of the historical value of the road, but it sounds like the historical value in terms of cellar holes and, what do you call them, stone walls are on their property and not along the road, I think? I think I read that.
I don't, I, yeah. Well, if the stone wall is on their property,
Yeah, so we can't do it.
They are allowed, that's,
Yeah, that's true.
But if it's a, a, if it's along another piece of property, both property owners have to agree to the disturbance.
Oh, parts of it are aligned with stone walls extensively, so on the southern, southerly leg, so that is the,
That he's close to East Madison Road.
Yeah.
I think that they have a copy of our class six road, uh, regulation.
I don't know, maybe from a past, they must, because they already did go on a class six road one, so. But it's been a few, quite a few years now.
Looks like the logging and class six roads regulation is, was adopted August first, two thousand and six. You're the chairman, John, you remember that.
Yeah.
Eighteen years?
Time flies.
I mean, I don't, without going out there to see what the road condition is or whether or not it matters, I'd like to see some sort of a bond.
I agree with you, I don't know how much size. Well, a thousand dollars doesn't buy anything.
No, I think it's gonna be at least a five thousand dollar bond.
That's what I was looking at.
I agree.
And on that same premise, I'd like to see if maybe Bob or somebody can go up there and take a few pictures of the, where the lot meets Maple Grove and, let's see, the road on the other side.
Actually, DPW might do that, because they're, DPW might do that.
Yeah.
Because they're gonna have the issue of tryaway prevent.
True.
So, we can just give them to take pictures so we can document whether or not the road is damaged, not that. Sure, Tom will fix it anyway, but.
So, both sides of it, the class six, Amicanet and Maple Grove, Maple Grove and Pound?
Maple Grove and Pound.
Only Maple Grove and Pound.
Now, the part of the class six that is on their property, if any damage happens?
There's, they have to, that five thousand dollars would potentially, they're supposed, yeah, they're supposed to return it. If they do use it, which they can use it because it's a town road, they have to, if there is any damage to it, they have to make, return it to us, as was, at least, or better, as opposed. And if they don't, that's where that bond comes into play, that we would be able to, require to be fixed.
Okay.
And we wouldn't be spending, we'd have to hire somebody to, to, I'm assuming, to fix it if it came to that because we can't spend any money on, including a class six road. So, it's a catch twenty-two. And like I said, they, they, they're in this business, they're not gonna.
No, I'm sure Tom will fix it if it needs to be fixed. Don't need a motion for that bond.
Could we just to make sure?
I would make a motion on that.
All second. All in favor?
Did you need something first, Linda?
Require a five thousand dollar bond?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've kinda gleaned it out of there.
Okay. You said wait a minute, someone, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna fill in. All right, yeah, all right.
All right, consider a stipend for DTF bookkeeper.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I put anything in. No, well, Kathy Moore is the bookkeeper, and, um, long story short, she does a lot of running around for the town. She went to a, a webinar or took a class. And there is a provision in there that the RSA allows us to compensate the trustee of trust funds bookkeeper for their time and mileage, and she gave me a list, actually. Oh, yeah, of, um, what she actually does for us. The reason I thought I'd bring it up to you was because it needs to be in the form of a warrant article to be able to begin to offer her a stipend, so.
She elected or?
She is elected, yes.
Okay, is that why?
What's that?
Is that why it has to be a warrant article thing?
I don't know why, it's just part of the trustee of trust funds, um, RSA that dictates how that works. But a more of a heads up that if it's all right, if you guys would consider that, I'll, when I draft up the warrant, I'll put something on there to see about offering her some sort of stipend. It doesn't, it'd be a dis, a number that you guys could decide if you wanted to. But at least make a spot for it, for a discussion item.
Okay.
To offer her something like that, and then tell me when you would decide it.
Okay.
I mean, she does come by the office, you know, a couple of times a month, they have a meeting, she runs to the bank for us quite a few times. The only thing that I thought about though with it is that, um, she is also the, um, village district vitalize. They're trustee of trust funds bookkeeper in a sense, you know what I mean? Because they have their own funds, and I'm pretty sure the school has theirs. So, I don't know if that would be something that like, video E would have to pitch in a little portion to cover her, and they'd have to do some kind of a warrant article. You see what I'm saying with that? Not that I don't think she's deserving, but I don't know as though we should pay for everyone. You know, everyone's bookkeeping for her. So anyways, if it's all right with you guys, I'll put, I'll, I'll make sure that the wording for a warrant article is correct, and then at a future meeting, we can kind of talk about, more about what she, something to offer her for, for time, but.
Yeah, she can put together, you know, for a calendar year.
Yeah, she actually, she did, and I just hadn't got the opportunity to get any books, but we'll use that when we, if you want to decide a number. Thank you.
All right, health insurance rates for twenty twenty-five. Couple of things, the current plan and current rate increase is six point three percent. Linda took the liberty of giving prices for an alternate plan, which would save us somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars.
Without having done the math, yeah.
I think, yeah, that was the math based on last year's pricing.
Right.
It's somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars, switching to a plan with a slightly higher deductible.
And, um, copay?
And copay, I,
Yeah.
All right, so the copay increase is ten dollars, almost across the board, five or ten dollars depending on the procedure. And the deductible increase went from, would go from one thousand to three thousand for a single, and three thousand to nine thousand for a family plan, however, the maximum out of pocket doesn't change from one plan to the other, stays at five thousand to ten thousand. In my opinion, switching to the higher deductible plan is a great idea. Save the town a hundred thousand dollars, the impact on the employee is minimal, especially considering.
We had very few claims anyhow.
Right. Considering our personnel policy is to pay for half of the deductible anyway, I don't think that it's a significant impact on the employee.
Yeah, the budget committee has done a lot of, um, looking into this and research and working with Linda. Linda, um, had spoken to, um, employees who have the health plan and, you know, what would the impact to them be? And it seemed like it would be, like you said, minimal. And then another piece that is, might be proposed by the budget committee is, um, when we did the math, not knowing it was gonna be six point nine percent increase, um, that increasing the employee contribution from something like five percent to eight percent would also, um, save the town a significant amount of money with, at the time, at the math, at the time, it was six dollars every other week for, I think, a single or family plan. We, we did the math, but anyway, so the budget committee, I think, was gonna, now that they have this number, they'll be able to, look at it a bit more closely and then, um, make a recommendation. But I think, um, they were definitely on board with Linda's research, having, um, found this other plan that would not significantly impact employees.
Yeah, it was more than six dollars every other week, I know that because it was.
Maybe that was the single plan?
I don't, well, we don't have a single, so. But anyways, um, but yeah, no, I, that was, I.
That was a thought that they had that they're gonna,
Yeah.
look at numbers and see what they, what it would look like, so.
But this isn't anything that you have to decide yet. If you want to make a change, we have to let Health Trust know by November fifteenth, and you still have two meetings between now and then. Well, you don't, you, we have to sign it on the twelfth, so we'd have to know, make the decision or something to get new paperwork before that date.
I mean, based on what I've read, I am, I'm all for switching the plan.
To this plan here?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, it's a very competitive market out there. You have five physicians in today's paper, CDL drivers. State of New Hampshire has shot two hundred drivers. That's a lot of snow plowing. And they're moving money from one account to another so they can give people bonuses. And, which is probably gonna take drivers from little towns like us, hopefully not us, but. which is probably gonna take drivers from little towns like us, hopefully not us, but we just can't manufacture CDL licenses. So we need to be careful about what we do.
They've made it difficult.
I, I kinda like this plan, if we're gonna save a hundred thousand dollars.
With minimal impact to employees.
Right.
Very minimal, that's important.
Sounds like you've had a discussion with a number of employees and they're.
They're okay with it.
They're okay with it, the ones that you have talked to.
And personally, I think I said this at the ABC meeting too, I mean, going from a fifteen dollar co-pay to a twenty-five dollar co-pay, even the twenty-five dollar co-pay compared to a lot of what people pay is not so wrong, yeah. And there's so many things with them that if you do your regular things that just keep you healthy, you don't pay a co-pay anyway, so.
Wellness visits and things like that.
Right, exactly, there's no co-pay, so.
So, do I hear a motion to have Linda speak with our agent to switch to this new plan?
Is that going to affect January first?
It would be, yes.
And the only thing to be discussed would be whether or not there's gonna be an additional fee or not. So you made a motion on that?
I didn't, I was looking for one.
Well, when we were at the ABC meeting talking about the employees' contribution.
Yeah.
Um, my thought that I expressed to them that night was that we're making a change right now towards the end of the year, we're gonna be telling everybody that you're gonna be paying a little bit more in your co, in, you know, in your co-pay, and there'll be a deductible change, and there are some other small, you know, changes in here, um, considering that there could be potential of saving a hundred thousand dollars. I suggested not changing the employee um, contribution now. Consider that as a, 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 something to do next year so that we're not surprising everyone with, okay, so here's, you know, we're gonna hitch up for ten dollars every time you go to the doctors, and we're gonna do a little bit more out of your paycheck every week. I, that was my thought to the board, but seriously, consider next year getting the personnel policy in line so that in twenty twenty-six, excuse me, the, that potential, potential increase to the employee would, would happen. That was my opinion that I expressed at the ABC meeting.
Did Joe Dane get a copy of this?
No, I actually just got it today.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, he'll.
Oh, yeah, he'll love, I think he'll like those papers.
He'll write more numbers for us, and then we can see what it all looks like.
So we got a motion on the floor?
I'll make it, I will make a motion that we switch to this new house plan to save the tax payer a hundred thousand dollars a year. You don't have to put that in motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah, that would be Plan AB.
Oh, yeah, if you can read that, good luck.
Oh, good lord. ABSOS two five slash five oh, three KDED.
Yes.
You know that?
Yeah.
Magnifico.
Yeah, I know. Um, and just to say it out loud too, the S, the SOS means site of service, so if I went to have a blood test done, and instead of going to my, my primary care physician, having it done there, if I went to like a Quest facility or something like that, um, it would be totally covered and it wouldn't even touch the deductible, so they, they, they give, they give us the employees plenty of options of ways to help them save money all around, so. And I think a lot of the, in that packet that I gave you, there were some of the little statistics about what everybody tried to save, and you know, how things, money was spent.
And this is the exact one that the budget committee has already seen, just not the final numbers?
Correct.
Right.
The, the theory of going to that, yeah.
But this was the same plan?
Yes, same plan, new, just the updated numbers, premium numbers. So anyways, there's a motion.
Motion for a second?
For your second?
I second it.
All favor?
Alright.
Aye.
So I'll get that together so that maybe you can sign it until October twenty-ninth, maybe, that's next month.
Hold this. Follow-up on STR questions from nine seventeen, nine seventeen was a long time ago. So, there were a couple of questions, one of them being that what happens if the owners of thirteen were starting to sell, which if I understand correctly isn't a concern anymore, they took it off the market?
They took it off the market.
Yeah, so basically Cordell said if they were to sell, it would be up to the owners whether or not they want to pull their case or continue. And there wouldn't be any fines to impose because they were continuously within the appeal process up until they sold. But, like I said, it sounds like that's not a concern anymore. And the other question was, at least, sending letters to the three houses that were presented to us at the last meeting. And Cordell does not feel like there is any advantage to sending those letters at this moment, but obviously it's the board's decision. Any discussion from the board on that?
Yeah, I would, I don't see the harm in sending three more letters out. Personal feeling.
Any comments, Joy?
I kinda lean with the attorney, so there's no advantage to sending them right now.
Other than it would put them on notice.
But we'd have to continue at all and make them either decide that.
We'd have to what?
We'd have to, once we start, we'd have to continue and potentially, I don't know if the word is not force them, but you know, give them a path to the ZBA.
And how many more we got sitting on the ZBA?
I have eight sitting upstairs and two are on hold in court right now, pending the one that happened last.
So you got two, two pending in court?
Pending what, the decision, they're out of stay right now.
Pending this decision, we have any idea when this decision may happen?
I'm, I'm thinking into December, maybe?
Can I just comment, um, the three that are in court, one is being, had their hearing last week, the other two were pending, correct?
They're out of stay, yes.
All three of those were ones that had at least some, if minimal, rental prior to March of twenty twenty-two. None of them had, none of them were new after March of twenty twenty-two. And that was sort of the differentiation, is that regardless of how that situation goes, either for the town or against the town, there's still, and I believe during the hearings, I did attend, um, the judge did ask Matt Johnson, the attorney for the property owners, um, about defending their clients against our amended ordinance, and he did say something to the effect that would be very difficult to do. Which made me feel better that, you know, he even realizes the strength of what we did back in March of twenty twenty, um, Matt Johnson.
Who's the attorney for the STR owner?
Yes, and he did say that he would have a hard, he would, he felt it would be very difficult to defend against our new language.
Right.
But that wasn't what the case was about, he just, the judge asked him that question, and he said, but none of these cases are about that, and yes, that was true, they were not, they all had a little bit of renting before, so they were trying to claim grandfathering status.
Are there any that are in the stay that are, that are the opposite?
Yes.
In the stay, or?
In the.
There was.
No, there's already, there's two, two are on hold right now.
Well, you, like, pending to go to the ZBA, are there any of those cases that started after March of twenty twenty-two that are on the?
Yes, yeah, there was five, there's five.
So there's potentially some.
There's one Oak Ridge, eighty Oak Ridge.
Those aren't on the stay, those haven't been made it to.
Right, they have, they, they've appealed, they want continuance, they want continuance.
Yes.
But they started after March of twenty twenty-two, so, so they could potentially be the next Texas cases to move forward.
One of them sold, fourteen Youngfroth sold, one of them is on the market, um, there's one Oak Ridge, eighty Oak Ridge, and I think twenty-three Middle Shore.
I have more than five upstairs.
So there's three, and of the three that we presented recently in July, one of them is on the market now, sixteen Grissin is on the market. So, the whole point was at least get the process started, because this is gonna last at least till next year. And these cases that are with the court have nothing, they're all pre-March of twenty twenty-two, not after. And I guess the hope is that the next planning board meeting, when they're looking at those cases that were awarded a six-month continuance.
You mean ZBA?
ZBA, I'm sorry, not planning board.
Planning board doesn't do it.
No, I'm sorry, that's my fault, that when they look at the six-month continuance, that they don't take all of them and continue for another, another six months, but maybe just the ones that have the same conditions as the ones that are already going forward, but take the new ones.
And they're not even gonna do anything with that till November, till the next case.
Well, that's coming up.
November's the next meeting?
November twenty, no, tomorrow night's our next meeting, but November twentieth is when they've, Attorney Johnson asked to put all the cases on hold till November twentieth, to see, he was, to see where.
So, so.
I'm good.
Sorry.
I still find myself in the same boat. Overwhelming the ZBA, overwhelming our staff upstairs to send more letters to people that we still don't have an answer for, for cases that are already in the same boat with the ZBA. The ones that in court are not going to give us the answer that we want, but the ones at the ZBA, there are few at the ZBA that will. And I don't see any point in overwhelming the ZBA until we have an answer. But, it's not just my call.
I agree.
I do as well.
Fair enough. Select McGray, do you have a list?
Thank you.
Um, I don't think so, I asked a lot of questions already on stuff, so I don't think I have a list today. Oh, sorry, I do have one, I apologize, um, Mud, Dr. Mud Road. How many houses are in that?
Two. It's a town road.
We're doing a lot, yeah, a lot of work up there.
Well, I guess it's been several, several, several years since they've actually done anything to it, so.
What, what road did you say?
Dr. Mud Road, it's Mooney to Salter Hill, up north of that. Didn't even know we had a Dr. Mud Road.
It was really, in really bad, bad condition.
Um, and then the zero-turn lawnmower, was it United Ag and, Ag and Turf, did that get injured?
Oh, I don't know.
The new lawnmower?
I don't know. Oh, there was a belt, yes, they had to do something with the belts, was that the new one?
That's the new one.
The new one, I think, I know that there was a belt issue with something, but I'm pretty sure they got it straightened out. If that's the right lawnmower, don't quote me, may not be, I don't know.
Yeah, they just bought that, let me see, May or June?
I wanna say then no, because that, if it went to, um, United Ag and Turf, that would have been a John Deere, and the new one we bought was not from United Ag and Turf, I believe we bought that at, um, M and B.
Yeah.
That was a great, being with a G, so.
It said the zero-turn, we only have the one zero-turn, and that's the one we just bought.
The other one's in a zero-turn too, no?
I don't recall.
I don't know, I don't know.
And then, um, wax oil system for the undercoating trucks, that's new?
That's for the new truck, the new rubber tawler.
Do we buy a system?
I doubt.
Not a treatment.
I don't.
Because Dave took a, Dave attended a tutorial on how to use the wax oil system. And it looks like there's a wax oil equipment setup, so is that a purchase by the DPW?
I know we undercoated the new truck, or what do they call it?
Do we know how much it was?
I, I don't know that.
I don't know.
We find out?
Oh, yeah.
And then, um, uh, truck eleven, is that, I should know, I have it in the CIP, but that's a new one, or that's an older one?
Ah, no.
They have a blue one and a red one and a green one.
Or truck twelve is the new one.
New one, okay.
Yeah.
There's a lot of work going on on truck eleven. Met with Napa about fenders and lights, worked on it. The code car to Hiltons for exhaust work, are we gonna see another bill for the code car?
Truck eleven is two thousand five.
Okay.
Code car?
Yeah, it looks like Friday, October eleventh, the code car went to Hiltons for exhaust work.
I don't know.
Yeah, Dave Swift took that last Friday up to Hiltons, and he's picking it up tomorrow, so apparently he didn't know exactly what had to do, what the repair was, but it sounded like most of the exhaust system was rusted, pretty bad shit. So, that's being repaired, I have no idea what the cost is gonna be.
Okay.
I was surprised when I didn't have my ride this morning, so.
Was it noisy for you, or?
Uh, it wasn't really noisy for it, but they, they discovered it when it was up there, it was starting to rust out pretty bad, and it was, it was on its way out, so they made plans to go ahead and repair it, so, I was advised of it, so I don't know all the details. I've had that happen on personal vehicles before too, so.
Was it the inspection that caught that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so it's a random fate for the DPW to catch, but it was inspected.
Right, it was inspected, while it was up, I'm sure they discovered it, so, yeah.
The new grader came in?
Yeah, it's working.
So North Division Road is perfect now, right, John?
Yeah, most of them I should rent, they drives way too fast now. Couple problems, those people now.
So you're gonna be out there with your shovel tomorrow?
Yeah, I bet they're most.
Alright, yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
Go.
So a couple of things, the, uh, the funds we transferred earlier in the, first thing in the meeting, amounted to fifty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars, uh, which changes the amount of money we have to work with for the rest of the year. We're now at seventy-nine point two percent of the year, and we burnt through seventy-six point seven percent of the budget, so we gained a little more ground. Transfer station this week exceptionally busy. At the end of the day, we've collected sixty thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars in fees for various subject matter. Construction debris and bulky waste is by far, we take in more of that than anything. I haven't been on my soapbox for a while on recycling, but I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get a soapbox today. Boy, I hear a lot of noise when people go to the compactor, to two big compaxes up top, and they throw this stuff in. If you hear a noise that's loud, you are not recycling. So by hiding it in bags and throwing it in, I hear it and you should hear it. We're wasting money, I mean, this, this table boys about money all the time, I worry a lot about money. Every time you hear a loud bang, it's probably a glass bottle. And glass bottles are heavy, and they weigh a lot. Hiding TVs in bags, not a way to go. Hiding two-by-fours in bags is not a way to go. But I have to be careful, because we do not have mandatory recycling, it is strictly up to the person. But if you have any kind of conscience at all, and the vast man, you, you probably don't even wanna hear this, the vast majority of the people from out of state recycle. The vast majority of our population does not. And that should just ring a bell with someone, somewhere, because we always point at those crazy people that drive around here from Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Connecticut, New York, and all those places. Those people are forced by cost to recycle. Those people are forced by cost to recycle. We don't wanna do that here. We don't wanna force people to do stuff because it just becomes a nightmare. There are towns in the state of New Hampshire that do it though. You pay it, it's called pay as you throw. The more bags you have, the more you pay. We try to make it as easy as possible, it runs as smooth as we can make it right now without spending a lot more money. It's running smooth, we have places for glass, we have places for cardboard, for paper, for plastic, for your beer and soda cans, your bulky waste. So what goes down those chutes should not make a sound. There's no reason, there's nothing that would go in there that is not recyclable. You know, we now take tin cans, we take all kinds of metal, doesn't cost you anything. I'm gonna get off my soapbox. Hopefully, I'm probably preaching to the choir.
Comment?
Sure.
Do you recall why the selectmen chose not to have mandatory recycling?
Mandatory.
I remember it was debated.
It was debated, it, it would cause a nightmare. I'd be willing to take that in the head. But we'd have to probably make a, we'd have to make a small investment, it wouldn't be big. We have the things in place, they're there. It's just a matter of people.
Maybe it should be an agenda item.
Well, this sort of is my agenda. This is my agenda. You know, you try to stop people that are carrying cardboard boxes and you go, that really goes down there. With the cardboard and paper. Oh, I didn't know that. You know, we got plenty of sign work, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make the place one continuous sign. And just one more thing and I'll get off my, my box. Please arrive fifteen minutes before we close.
Well, please arrive two hours before you close, really.
Well, that would even be better. People don't understand, they pull up at five minutes to four, and there's a line of cars and they go, why, what's going on? You're here, and so are they. If you come a little bit earlier and get in and out really quick. If you come in late with a large load, they're gonna be there a while, and we try to move out of there. So, try to think about recycling a little bit, and I'm not considered by far any one of these green kinda people, you know. I just do it from a financial standpoint. It just costs money to get rid of it. We hauled this week.
It's not easy being green, John.
Huh?
It's not easy being green.
I know, it's just, I, I look at it from a financial standpoint. On bulky waste, which we do get paid for. On bulky waste, we shipped out twelve point nine tons of bulky waste and construction debris this week. I collected for those two, those two wives, I collected thirteen hundred and eighty dollars. And our tipping fee and our transportation comes to about twelve hundred, so there's a about a hundred dollar difference. That includes Dave and the truck. I kinda run those numbers every week to see where we're making a little bit. We're not killing anybody. But, that's twelve tons. And in our rubbish containers, we put out as much as thirteen tons in one container. That was a high in the summer. They usually go up with about ten tons a piece. A lot of tonnage for a small ton. That's it, I'm done.
You sure?
I think I'm done. Can put the box away.
I'm all set, Linda.
Can I ask a follow-on question? The issue that came up right at the beginning about the SDR case that, where the fees were owed by the, by the owner, property owner, and we expended so much money to lawyers, and the decision was made to basically drop that. Can you guys just comment on, on why that decision was made?
Same comment I think we've made this entire time, the goal is compliance. If we're getting people to comply, we're doing our job. Can you say your name for the camera, sorry?
Yeah, Dave Scarborough. Sorry, I'm just not following the logic on that in terms of, we did send a message to, to everybody in the town who might otherwise, you know, abuse the law that they can get away with it and they're not gonna have to pay anything. So I'm just, I'm confused about the, the thought process. We expended almost five thousand dollars in legal fees to, to bring this person into compliance. Why, why not recoup some of that from?
It was also on advice from our attorney to take that deal.
Was it gonna cost us more if we then continued to pursue it?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, I don't have that paperwork in front of me at the moment, but I know that was his advice.
Was it, I mean, was it a decision by this board?
Yeah. Yes.
I mean, so you all agreed with this?
Yeah.
All right, I'm just curious, I just haven't heard the, I'm sure you made a good decision, I just haven't, haven't heard.
It would cost attorney fees to go after that money.
Okay, I got it.
It would cost more.
That's what I was looking for.
You, you referenced a case before that it took, how many tens of thousands?
It took tens of thousands of dollars just to get in one particular case. We didn't, in the end, we didn't come out ahead. Cause our, our attorneys are gonna cost us money. So, if we penalize somebody, and some of these numbers are astronomical, seventy or eighty thousand dollars, no court is gonna give that. We, we had a case up, not far from here. Where we spent years going after getting compliance and trying to get the money back. And we started with about this much in fines and we ended up with about that much in fines and that much in legal. And, uh, I, I, I agree with Adam, I think it's happened to the desired effect. A lot of these people are getting out of it, cause I think they see the handwriting on the wall.
Yeah, well, that's the important thing, right?
To me it is, I don't, I assume the board is in the same position.
Okay, thank you, I, I, I just wanted to understand that. Chief?
Nothing for me.
Nothing? I was looking forward to talking to you all night.
You're such a talkative guy.
Heather?
Just this weekend, uh, Sunday, we have our pumpkin carving, Patriots game, pancake brunch. Squeeze it all in till Sunday morning. That's nine to twelve. I think that's it.
How are the teams doing?
Awesome. Soccer team is undefeated. Field hockey is, ugh.
It's second year.
Second year, and they're doing really, really well, yes. Yeah, we played Freiburg, we played, um, Conway-Ospie, it's building, it's great. Yep, doing good. I think that's it.
Are you hiding out there, Bob?
Thank you, bro, for everyone. Uh, just continuing to be swamped with permanent applications, both building and mechanical. Zoning complaints, not much on health issues right now, but I have had a few. But just swapped, so trying to stave up the water anyway.
Appreciate it.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Bill.
All right. We have that signature items.
This is group signature.
I suppose, I'll update this one, but it looks like there's a lot of.
Yeah, I'll do, is that what you said? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Did you say phone issue?
I think so.
That makes sense. I tried dialing out again and I couldn't get it.
Chief, do you have an update for us while we sign? Certainly. Absentee ballots have been received, every request we've had has been sent out as of, we got them on the second of October, so we're up to date. Everybody that's requested has received their ballot. It's been sent to them, I don't know that they've all been received. So that's rolling. On the PFAS issue, I just got notification today of the, uh, the proposal by Wilcox and Barton was approved by DES, so they're proceeding with sending out letters, notifications to the surrounding properties that have been identified.
What was that again?
The notifications to the abutting landowners.
The five-hundred-foot?
Yeah. So they'll be sending those letters out. I don't know, maybe they did it today. They're proposing to do that round of testing on the twenty-eighth of this month. And the additional sample from, um, the, the test wells on this property the next day, the twenty-ninth.
All kind.
And I don't know why it just hit me, but it hasn't been identified. We have another well right over there. I'm gonna call them tomorrow and suggest that we should probably draw our sample from that well along with the surrounding properties.
Which well?
The one that, the one that's over by the basketball court. The new drill dwell. It doesn't get used much or anything like that, but it exists and it's viable, it's connected to that pump inside the jet for, they use it for rec program and such. So I was gonna reach out to them and get it out, I mean, they could draw that the same time they do these, it doesn't matter when it happens, but I think it should be tested.
Should be tested.
There was a, um, a recent study that I haven't read up on and validated, and I've just heard about it. About PFAS being absorbed through the skin potentially, not just consumed. But I haven't read enough on it to know that, whether that, that was valid. Logic makes sense, but.
I, I'm not, I'm not familiar exactly with the study you're probably referring to, but I do know that there's an issue, as funny as it is to say, there's a lot of PFAS in the protective gear that we wear.
Yes, I've read that too.
There's a lot of work going into that, and they're actually making PFAS-free gear now, which is just like, just coming out. Believe it or not, it's more expensive than the other.
I can't believe that.
Go figure, it's hard to believe, but. So, uh, that's a very real concern.
Yes, yep, I just heard that one this week.
Those are all set.
And let's see.
That's awesome.
We do have, uh, have a mechanical issue on the tank truck. It's one of the oldest trucks that we have, not complaining by any stretch, but a piece of the housing of the pump has got a crack in it and it's leaking a little bit. I have a price to replace the pumping kind, restore our existing capabilities for a little over nine thousand dollars. I have requested a proposal of what it would cost to upgrade, make it, it's a five-hundred gallon per minute pump, which is relatively, it's, it's really small in firefighting arenas. And one of the plans on the capital improvement plans for the department is not to replace that truck, but to upgrade the pump. Give it a little bit more capability. So I've asked for a quote on what that might cost, I haven't received it yet. As soon as I do, I'll be in front of you with that, cause I'd like not to, depending on what that cost is, not spend nine thousand dollars to get back to where we are. It's gonna be more, no doubt. But if we spend a little bit more money now, it gets us ahead of, so to speak, the, the capital plan. My personal plan is to hold on to that truck for as long as possible. It's extremely low miles, it's in very good shape. It served us well, it will continue to serve us well, I'd just like to upsize the pump a little bit to give us a little bit more capability. Cause it carries three thousand gallons of water. And when you got limited personnel, the more water you can roll out with, the better. So, anyway, just give you an update on. And I have had some other issues with engine three, which have been repaired to the tune of, I don't know if you paid the bill tonight, but I assume you did, like thirty-three hundred dollars. So, stuff's not cheap and I'm not looking to poke my finger in your eye, but that's one of the lines that we cut from and we're now getting close on it, but it was one of those you don't know. We didn't spend hardly any last year. This year we've made some repairs and spent almost all of it, so I think about five thousand dollars left after that bill is paid in that line. And obviously that doesn't cover a nine thousand dollar bill for the tank truck, but.
You can poke my eyes, I'm.
I don't did it, but no, well, I was right there with you and I did it willingly to help out, but it's one of those things where questions will be asked, why lines get overspent, but sometimes that's why. That's all that I have on my mind, I'm sure I'm forgetting something.
On the PFAS issue, there are so many lawsuits right now. If we identify what foam was used, by which manufacturer, any of the A triple F foam, if we have any kind of receipts, so to speak, and not even financial receipts, just proof that we purchased from one of the manufacturers that used 3M or DuPont foam. Those lawsuits are everywhere right now, and people, fire departments are getting reimbursed of having success getting.
I can, I, obviously I can do some digging, I'm just not sure.
This goes back some time, doesn't it?
Yeah, quite, quite a, we stopped, and I don't remember the timing exactly, but the trucket issue was engine one, which was replaced with the newest engine three. And that replacement was in sixteen. But it was sometime before that, when we stopped using this class, it's the Class B foam. And we had the truck, because it had a Class B, it was the only truck we had that had a Class B tank on it. And we had that retrofitted for the Class A foam, which is allegedly supposed to have been safe. So, it's, we're going back close to twenty years, probably. And you always have stuff on hand if you can, I mean, I wouldn't know when we, all I can do is, is dig around, because that's one thing that we don't throw away is records, so the records are there, it's a matter of, if we can find the right ones of what we bought and from where. Possibility, I'll look.
Yep, we just have the manufacturing stuff. Because the first cases against DuPont for the PFOA, they pulled out of a settlement and the cases went one by one, and there were thirty-three, thirty-five hundred individual cases for cancers and health issues caused by the PFOA specifically. And DuPont pulled out, and when they did, each individual case went forward. The first case, the family was awarded one point six million, the second one was five point something million, the third was twelve point six million, and then DuPont went enough, here's seven hundred million dollars to split amongst the other litigants, so.
That'll go quick.
Yeah, with all those families. And then also implemented, um, health monitoring for everyone involved in the seventy thousand people involved in that class action. So they have health monitoring for the rest of their lives, cause many of them are pretty much guaranteed to get the cancers and stuff.
Obviously, my first, no, there's no good way to say this, but we're gonna have a cost going forward for.
Really?
Yeah, and it's a terrible thing to have to say forever, but.
They're forever chemicals.
It's a long, a long time. It'd be nice that there was some requirement that they establish a fund to pay for these type of damages and fortunately, right now, I'm not aware of anybody that we have with health issues that we could tie back to this, and I'm thankful for that. Which is not to say that it might not happen.
PFOA, which was one of the large numbers in our well, and PFOS, which was a large number in one of the wells in front of the firehouse. They were added to the hazardous chemicals list under the super fund law. So there is funding and there is that there is money available in addition to the nine point whatever billion that the infrastructure law just put out.
I would foresee, let's see, the end of this month, they're gonna draw these tests. So by the end of November, we should have those results back. I would think going into the early part of December, we're gonna have a at least a much better idea of the scope of what we're dealing with. Of course, if they find numbers in these five hundred foot wells, then we're gonna have to go further. So we won't necessarily have fully identified the scope, but at least it's a big problem in one well serving the four municipal buildings. So that's a big enough problem.
Well, the numbers in the other wells are even bigger.
Right, but they're they're gonna be in the test wells because they're getting closer to the problem.
Right.
They're bigger than the water well, which is a not, not, nothing's good about it, but I'm glad that the numbers aren't higher in the well than they are because they're too high.
Yep.
But.
In the October, it was October third, twenty twenty-three meeting when Wilcox and Barton first showed up, they said it's a six-figure problem to remediate, so we do have to plan for six figures, which is why it's so important that we go out, you know, go after these grants that are available.
And the information that I've gained so far with the the closest, the town of Stratum, and again, I'm only dealing with one set of engineers, but they, in their opinion, they're very closely relative to the situation that that Madison is. They don't have municipal water. They're they're dealing with the same issues that we are, private wells, septic, that type of, no municipal infrastructure. They have in engineering spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in five years just on, just on engineering, not remedial measures. So we're gonna be into the six figures just on professional guidance. And then I haven't heard anything back from the state as far as the remaining funds from FY twenty twenty-three that we applied for. And and there's other sources and we we're just gonna have to identifying the scope of the issue is one, is paramount to because whenever you apply for money, you have to have articulable demonstrable need and we, I mean, we know we have a need, but we just don't know what the need is exactly because we don't know how big the problem is. How many of these systems are we gonna have to install? We know it's one right now and on our well, we know that and that's five to seven thousand dollars, depending on what the design is. And then if anything's found in these other wells around us, we're gonna be responsible for that too, and they're about five to seven thousand dollars apiece. So like I said, once nothing has been ignored since day one, when they told us to draw a test, we did. And then they told us to draw another test, we made that. After that, they told us to conduct a focused site investigation. And we've done, we're in the middle of that. So there's, nobody's been asleep at the switch since the issue's been identified.
Yeah, all the letters between the DES and Madison are available on the DES website. You can go on their own, all right there, they show the timelines.
On the one stall, yeah.
Yep, that's a great resource.
All right. Well, I think I will make a motion to enter non-public per RSA ninety-one A colon three, room number two, little A, the dismissal promotion, a compensation of any public employee for the dis- or the disputing of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected one has the right to a meeting and two, request that meeting be open, in which case that request shall be granted. Give it a second.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Joe and I.
Joe and I.
Adam and I. Thank you, Caution.